...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. To our gracious Lord, we just humble ourselves before you at this time. Just thank you for the Almighty God that you are. We thank you that you're the Provider, you're the Sustainer, you're the One who continues to direct. We thank you for the gifts that you've given each one of us. We thank you for how you continue to move in our midst. We just pray for the Sydney meeting that you'll direct and guide and just give us the Sermon and the oneness as we work together. So we commit our way into your hands. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Well, and before you go too far, one of the nice things that we get to do is have a proclamation. And we have a proclamation to read for Veterans Day. Thank you, Superintendent. Look at the pie in the sky.
Oh, the pie in the sky, okay.
The City of Bonnersprings proclamation reads, "Whereas our great country produces a lot of things, but the standout, the strongest, the most resilient, honorable, dedicated, committed, and true American product will always be the American veteran. Veterans exist to protect our way of life. And whereas we honor those who are dedicated to something bigger than themselves, we honor every man and woman who has proudly worn the uniform of our armed forces and bravely defended America from the many evils of the world. Whether serving here at home or abroad, this elite group of individuals has ensured that we are able to live our daily lives free of tyranny and fear. And whereas this relatively small group of individuals does not ask for anything from us in return, our veterans have bravely answered the call to preserve the values upon which our nation was founded, and their service should make every American feel a deep sense of pride. And whereas for those currently deployed, we pray for their safe return, and the BFW stands ready to support their families while they are away. And whereas our veterans deserve our lasting gratitude and respect. Each and every American veteran has had a significant role in shaping America's past, our present, and undoubtedly our future. Though we cannot repay them for their many sacrifices, we must show our appreciation through whatever means possible. And therefore, I, Jeff Harrington, Mayor of the City of Bonnersprings, do hereby recognize November 11th, 2019, as Veterans Day. This Veterans Day, we join with Americans across the nation in paying tribute to America's most selfless citizens. I ask all Bonnersprings residents to join me in focusing your thoughts of thanks to those who fight to protect our way of life." Congratulations, Ken.
Thank you.
You have any words to say you'd like to add?
I just appreciate the support of the city, how you continue to endorse and support us in our activities, and we're honored to be able to do it. You know, it's like you can generally see that, you know, we took an oath to serve our country. We didn't end when we reached out the service. You know, it still goes on, so.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Onto our consent agenda this evening. Our, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Citizens Concerns. The first item of business is the opportunity for Citizens Concerns about items not on today's agenda. Is there anyone that would like to stand and address the City Council this evening? Seeing none. We'll go right on then into the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening includes the minutes of the October 28th, 2019 City Council meeting, claims for city operation, and claims for public housing authority. Anything to be pulled by the citizens? By staff? Council? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second. Go please, or, no, go please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, on to the red-letter meeting agenda. The first of which is to extend ready services, GAG and IRB resolution of intent.
Amber Phillips, I have, the first item is the resolution of intent to extend ready services, IRB. They are almost finished with their project. Just need a few more weeks to wrap everything up before we're ready to issue the ordinance for the IRB bond. And this resolution will extend them through December 21st. And we have Adrian Searing with QTAC Rocker Bond Health here if there's any questions regarding the IRB.
Very good. Thank you. Anything to add by the citizens or other staff? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to extend the adopted resolution, extending the resolution of intent to issue IRBs through December 21st, 2019.
Second. Moving in second, questions, concerns, comments? We'll start over here, sir. None of you. Nothing here.
You're already done, thank you.
Sir, I have mentioned a quarter. It was JAG. It was JAG.
Oh, sorry. Seeing nothing else, go please.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto item number two, an ordinance to issue industrial revenue bonds for Kincaid Coach.
Amber Phillips, this ordinance wraps up the Kincaid Coach IRB process. We are ready to issue the IRBs for Kincaid Coach. They are at completion for their project or very, very close to it, close enough to issue the IRBs. I think they'll be having an open house within the next month, which you all should get an invitation to if you haven't already. We've extended their resolution of intent a few times to allow for them to complete the project. Their current resolution extends through December 14th, but they're ready to go forward now. So we have the resolution or the ordinance to issue them. I have it in front of you today.
Anything else from citizens or other staff? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt an ordinance authorizing the safety issue of industrial revenue bonds, Series 2019, in a principal amount of $17,265,000 for Kincaid Coach project.
Second. Moving in second, questions, concerns, comments? We'll start over here.
I had a question on the bond purchase agreement with the trustee. Is there a reason why that was Commerce Bank of Kansas City, Missouri, not a little bank?
Adrian Searing with QTAC Rocker Cities Bond Council. Mr. Mayor and Council, fantastic question. The company involved gets to pick the trustee, and this particular company decided that they had a relationship with Commerce Bank, and they wanted to go with them. Where possible, we'll try to, we don't get to make that decision, but where possible, we try to steer people towards local title companies and local banks. But ultimately, we're not in control of that process.
Nice choice, okay. Thank you, I appreciate that, that's all I had on.
The, one of the agreements with Kincaid was down the road. If they, we gave percentages, additional percentages or incentives if they develop the properties on Front Street. At that point in time, well, how will the pilot amount adjust? Will they adjust accordingly? Will it be recapsulated and spread across to all 10 years? And captured then in those last, you know, six, seven, eight years when they actually earn those credits, you know, those additional discounts?
Yeah, that's a fantastic question, Councilman Stevens. If you have it in front of you, the pilot agreement itself, the payment and lieu of tax agreement, has near the very end Exhibit B, a pilot calculation. And right now, there's a placeholder of property value in there of $15,183,300, I'm sorry, $584. And just as a starter, that number is going to change, but we don't know exactly what the total amount will be. Before January 1st of this next year, we'll work with the Kincaid folks to have a more accurate number, but that was the placeholder we used at the time. So, I mean, you can sort of follow through from the left to the right, how the pilots are calculated on the sliding scale with the payment factor that's in the second to last column there. To answer your question directly, the additional improvements are, kind of start on the bottom of that first page and then run on to the second, to the top of the second page. They have, the Kincaid has until January 1st of 2025 to meet each of the benchmarks that are set out there. There are three of them. And for each benchmark, they can reduce the remaining pilots, so starting on whatever number we're at here, and each one.
Just the remaining?
Yeah, just the remaining pilots.
Will be, will be reactive.
By five percent. So if they were able to meet all three of them, it's an additional 5, 10, 15 percent.
Only on the remaining amount, okay.
So.
The sooner the better.
So. Yes, the sooner the better. And then ultimately, their time runs out as of January 1st, 2025. So these improvements, if they're able to accomplish all three of them, they would have to be met before that timeline, January 1st, 2025, in order to, for them to take advantage of the reduced payment. Or, excuse me, the reduced taxes and the increased payment.
Got you.
Just to make it clear, that they're still planning on keeping the facility here and using it here on Front Street so that everybody's aware that that's their intention. What I, that's what it looks like, but still, there's a lot of verbiage just to get to that.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well. I don't, I work, you know, I don't work for Kincaid, but that is my understanding as well.
Amber probably could touch on that, but I believe it is a case where, I mean, they're not locked in. They have to, but if they do, that's where the additional incentives are.
Very good, anything else? Seeing nothing, go please.
Kip?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Motion passes, kind of Wood, sorry. Yes, I can say. I know I was late. Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Next, item number three, policing our camera system and video evidence storage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Billy, that's you, please. 2017, the council authorized us to purchase the body camera system from Axon. At that time, we got quotes and evaluations for the in-car, and we thought that the body camera system solution would work because it was shoulder-mounted at the time or head-mounted. That has since changed in the last two and a half years to where it's now chest-mounted. So we kind of always had this option in the back end to add the in-car system out of the window date. We would like to take advantage of about, around $16,000 in savings if we go ahead and move with that project at this time. One thing that we're lacking, for the police department purposes, we have lost with the chest-mounted camera the ability to see, the traffic violations, to see the pursuits, to see the DUIs. And that's been affecting staff by way of court, by way of complaints, because we don't have that evidence available to us. So we would like to proceed with initiating this agreement. On the other side of that, by doing this, we also will be able to increase our storage to unlimited. Right now, we are about, I would say about a month out before we will be full. And part of that, videos are constantly deleting and added every day. But we've had to make some retention adjustments to get our cases through municipal court and district court, which has definitely increased our total video usage. Happy to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you. Any additional input from staff or citizens? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve an agreement to purchase Axon in-car camera system solution and authorize City Manager to sign the agreement.
Second. Moving in second, questions, concerns, comment? And I think we'll start right here.
I think it's a wonderful thing that we're keeping up to date with things. And it, well, it's got to take a lot of training though, doesn't it?
Yes.
Well, thank you for doing it.
No problem.
Yeah, the unlimited storage, what is our current hold time of data?
It just depends. So we have cases that are set on different retention schedules. If it's a normal, you know, morning citation, we could put 14 days, because statute doesn't have, there's nothing that governs body cameras right now. 90 days for in-car cameras, but there's no retention schedules. Originally, when I worked with municipal court, they wanted us to save videos for six months due to some court issues, where now I'm going to extend that to a year. Get cases through. District court's kind of up and down. So it just depends, a lot of cases we keep for two years before they start moving off. The ultimate hope is that you get a resolution in that time, but depending on the type of call dictates how long we keep the video.
Okay. I think that's sort of your answer. The other one I had was on the payment schedules. Are we paying those in a lump sum? Or is that, it's going to be billed within the billing year?
So one thing I was able to get, I was able to utilize my contacts. They are not going to, we have the initial $45,000, which is before you, to bill us again for the in-car system until 2021, so we have an opportunity to go through our budget process instead of having to make a mid-year budget adjustment. But there'll be additional four payments.
Okay. Cool, thanks, sir, that's all I had. Sir?
Thanks for all you do and everything you bring to us, because it's something that, being on the front lines and stuff, we don't have that opportunity per se where you do. And we need to know this stuff so you guys can, we all can be protected and appreciate all you do.
Does unlimited mean you can keep it for as long as you want to?
Correct.
So as much as you want, as long as you want.
Correct.
That's lots of luxury.
But Axon has what they call data capture farms. They're kind of all over the country, there's massive farms of data storage. It's very crazy. You ever be in opportunity, you're out in Scottsdale, you can talk to them about it, it's pretty interesting.
The, that answers the question, is the storage was offside. I assumed it was going to be. That video, those digital signals have to be transmitted. Do we have media availability when officer returns to station? Are those put on a server temporarily for, at least, there's visibility for our department to have access to while they upload into the cloud?
So one of the things with this, you'll see in the agreement, they're going to provide a cradle point system. So what that basically does is make it the entire police car a hotspot for data, and it's own little internal network. So once the video is recorded, it's uploaded to evidence.com where it's available for us at that time.
So it's pushing it even while they're out in, on the road?
Correct.
May I ask one more question?
Please.
On a scale of one to 10, what is this doing in legal situations? Things like this?
So one of the problems that we have right now is we're losing cases because there's no video, because they're taking so long to get through the court system. It also helps us from reducing liability, because we do get a lot of complaints where we're like, let's watch the video, and then they want to withdraw the complaint. At the same time, if we have an officer who is engaged in some sort of misconduct, we're able to confirm that and deal with that, you know, as we need to. The ultimate goal for us is a successful resolution at court, and so that's the piece we're kind of lacking. One prime example that we're dealing with a lot is failure yield in emergency vehicles or cars trying to get over. Pretty much every one of those in municipal courts gets dismissed because we don't have video of it. So, you know, it's a risk to the officer to be out there on the side of the road, and you have a car come by at 80 miles an hour and about take you out, and we need to be able to deal with that. So it'll help the prosecution. It'll help, you know, ensure the integrity of everything, transparency of what we do.
Okay, I was going to say, can I ask a follow-up on that? If you don't mind. Out of curiosity, is it just a straightforward camera or is there backward cameras as well?
There's two, there's one front. And it actually faces the in-custody compartment.
That's what I was going to ask.
In order to protect the liability. For example, at concerts, we'll get intoxicated individuals that like to smash their enemies to pieces. It helps show that that's the type of behavior that they're displaying, but also protects it, you know, so as harm that individual is, when doing it on the run of court.
So you'll have the in-car as well as the body camera. Will the drone footage that you want to store be?
We, we have, with this entire system, we have a whole separate piece of data storage that we can use. We've just never tapped into it yet.
Correct.
It's kind of always reserving it if we have a major homicide, those types of things, it's an extra space where we can add data. So yes, we could add the drone footage into it, and you create what's called a case file inside the system. The nice part for us, an attorney wants it, we just hit, send them a link, they have access to the video. It keeps track of stuff for discovery and all those things. So we have had some incidents where a prosecutor, or sorry, not prosecutor, defense attorney said they never got access. We're not able to pull it up and say, you accessed it this date, this time, you did this to it. And so that's very beneficial for us in court.
Sounds like this is pretty much the professional state of procedure that's being utilized by police departments?
Yes.
Is this leading edge, or is this?
This is the best, they have a new system coming out, but I always worry when new things come out. With, as a big piece of technology, you've got about, you know, a year or two years to figure out what's going to happen, what's not. You know, and the system that we're looking at is one that's been tried and true for the last couple of years.
That's, thank you. What does the lifespan?
Generally speaking, about five years. You know, just like any other, you know, I always ask, how many people have the same cellphone five years ago? Generally, they don't. So the technology will change quickly.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, go please.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto item number four, ordinance to amend in Chapter 3, Beverages of the Codes of Ordinances.
Chris Bricks, you're clear. One of our local businesses asked us if we could consider changing the time for serving alcohol. The state allows 6:00 AM, our city ordinance currently allows 9:00 AM.
To start?
To start. And this particular business has had customers ask for breakfast drinks, brunch drinks, and ask if they would consider changing that schedule. The city attorney did review this and approved it.
All right, very good. Nothing else from the citizens or other staff? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 3, Beverages of the Code of Ordinances.
Second. Moving in second, questions, concerns, comments? I'm going to start here this time. I'm trying to move around. Yes, it's not a big difference between 9:00 AM and 6:00 AM if you're wondering.
We're not doing something outside of the state. We're actually putting it in line with straight ordinances.
Sir?
I was curious, how many, do we have to know how many businesses we have that have beverage licenses?
I would say off the top of my head, maybe, maybe a half a dozen of alcohol businesses.
About six. Do we have any idea if we can get those partially open before 9:00?
That I don't know.
Just guess one.
So we literally have maybe one business that this affects?
And it might encourage another one to be able to do.
We could, I could think of two right off the top of my head, because Third Space also opens, just opened early.
Does Third Space have a liquor license?
They don't have a liquor license, they're behind. So currently, just, I think for one, if you choose.
That answered my question.
Anything else? Sir? Nothing else? There are no singles or what, sir.
Didn't mean to request that.
Be careful there, some bloody marys. No, I was just. Go please.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
No.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Good, on to item number five, personnel policy amendments. Thank you. We have previously been working on getting, changing our personnel policies over the last several years. One of the things that we did switch to is trying to be consistent with what the Fair Labor Standards Act sets out for what the work we consist of as far as what they use as hours suffered, so hours that are actually worked, not necessarily things like vacation or sick time usage and things like that. One of the things that has come up, and we have kind of looked around to see what other cities do, is the idea of callback time. Right now, we do have callback time paid at a incentivized way, it's awarded a two-hour minimum pay and then the time that you actually work. That actually is something that has, again, been discussed internally. It's been kicked around with different department staff as well. What the conclusion on that particular one is to move to what's referred to more as premium type of pay, which is effectively, if you get called back into work, this is predominantly public works, snow removal type things. So if you get called back to work after hours, unscheduled, the new idea would be that you're paid at time and a half. So again, a premium type of pay. The other part of that is standby. Right now, we don't have a standby policy. Therefore, we aren't compensating for that. It's just a requirement of every job that effectively someone are always on standby when you're employed with the city. Again, this is something that's driven predominantly within the public works realm, specifically utilities or after-hours utility locates, things like that. And then our utility plans as well. So again, we've looked around and tried to mimic what other cities are doing around us. And this is effectively would be, standby would become sort of an incentive pay whereby an employee is paid for a certain amount of money per day. So the recommendation here is at $20 per day that an employee is put on to callback or standby duty, excuse me, they pay $20 per that day. And then ultimately, I think I broke it out there, what that kind of equates to. Each department would be responsible for putting together their own policy for this. Right now, I can only really see this impacting public works. However, as we continue to look at some other departments, there's certainly some opportunity this might be extendable to some other ones. Ultimately, it's a pretty small amount of money that we're looking at. Just simple math, it's about $7,200 additional expense to the city to have just one designated person, at least in the public works realm on call. And then there was a minor tweak on here as well for pay periods. And then there was a minor tweak on here as well for pay periods. We do have some employees that are paid on a monthly pay period, so just cleaning up that language, predominantly that's volunteer type of position, we're only paying them on a monthly basis, and we've been doing that for, for years and years and years. So everybody else is paid on a bi-weekly schedule. So with that, happy to answer any questions. All right, well, first, we need a motion to discuss. I would entertain a motion. Nothing else from the citizens or staff?
Mr. Mayor, I made a motion to approve amending the 2019 personnel policy to a merit callback time, pay periods, and at standby duty as presented.
Second. Moving in second. Questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start over here.
Sir?
I'd just like to make a comment, that I appreciate you guys looking into this and helping to keep our staff feeling that we're, we're all doing what we need to, to be able to, I guess, be most equitable for them as a city.
What he said.
Will this affect police and recreation, things like that, where they come in on weekends or do that? As far as callback, yeah, it certainly has the impact. There is, I think that's section B of that callback time, is there is some type of shift modification that comes into play as well. So if it's usually, if we're having a callback, employees, especially on the public safety police side of it, it's usually a pretty significant issue that we're, that we're dealing with. But yeah, it would affect the entire organization. I use public works because it's, it's predominantly one that's going to be more impacted on a frequent basis, so. So they would schedule, in public works, they would schedule someone to be on callback duty, that if there was a call that night, they would be the one to call back first. And if something major happened, they had to call others in, then they, they wouldn't be scheduled on callback, but if available, they would be called in. Right necessarily. The same thing could happen in parks and rec, but just the doubt that it would happen is off. But will there be a parks and rec person put on standby callback? Well. Every night? For 20 bucks a head? So. Yeah, everybody that's in sort of the parks and recreation, as we think of more of the programming and things like that, those, this isn't going to apply to them, because everybody in that area is exempt. So they wouldn't be eligible for overtime pay. Now, anybody that is in sort of the parks maintenance realm is covered under that public works umbrella now. And right now, the, the idea is to have just one designated person on call that can pick up the phone. So we do have the after hours, after hours phones, if somebody calls in and something's awry, quite honestly, I believe I saw one yesterday over the weekend where there was a dead deer on Kansas Avenue, as an example, that went to the on-call person, the on-call person, I think addressed it or got somebody to address it. So again, it would apply to every department, but I wouldn't say that every department would have cause to really use it. And then it'd be equitable assignment of that? I mean, not one guy gets all of it? Yeah. So right now. The policy would do that? Yeah, this is what we've, I should say, we, Frank has been diligent about working on, and then some of the efforts on utilities side have been on this to clean up some of these things that maybe we weren't always doing the most consistent. So part of the idea of having a consolidated public works department was having this, again, efficiency. So one of those efficiencies gained recently was just have one on-call person. Before, we were running two, if not three people on-call. We weren't paying them for this. So again, back from the mayor's point, this is about trying to be equitable for folks so that they're not always just being put on-call. Because again, that is an obligation of every job, is to be on-call. We're just, as a city, saying that we recognize that you're doing this, and we want to make sure that.